Looking at you, just tell me.
Yep.
Okay, great. Welcome, everybody on a call to order tonight's city council meeting for North Bend, Washington, September 1st, 2020 via virtual meeting. Will the clerk please confirm the role?
Everybody's present, your honor.
Thank you very much. On tonight's meeting, we will be recording it as we usually do, and it will become available on the city's website.
Yes.
With past virtual meetings. We will also be taking public comment tonight. I will point out, we do have a long agenda. If you are here this evening to speak about a specific item on the agenda, we would suggest that you wait until that item comes up on the agenda to provide your comments. We do start the meeting earlier on with just general comments for items not on the agenda tonight. Before proceeding, I do understand, though, that the mayor pro temp may want to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda. So, Mr. Elwin?
Let him unmute. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, your honor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the city council agenda for the September 1st, 2020 regular city council meeting to add a new introduction item entitled Confirmation of Rebecca Denning as the North Bend Community and Economic Development Director as Item Number 17AB20-120.
Thank you. I have a motion.
One second.
I have a second. I have a second by Ms. Miller. Motion by Mr. Elwin. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm pausing. I see nothing. Motion carries. It is unanimous. We will add the item Confirmation of Rebecca Denning as North Bend Community and Economic Development Director as Item 17 to the agenda. That will be AB20-120. Thank you very much. I do want to add one other item, not to the agenda, but I wanted to call out when we're speaking about staff. I wanted to recognize a new member of our staff who started just today. So Dana McCall is on the call with us tonight. She is our new Public Information Officer and Communications Manager. So, welcome to Dana.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, we have 11 items on the agenda tonight. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. God help. Do I have a second?
Second.
Garcia. Thank you. I have a motion and a second by Mr. God help, Mr. Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and it is unanimous. Thank you very much for that. Citizens' comment at this time, as we've indicated, this is the time for speaking to items that are not on tonight's agenda. You are limited to three minutes. If you choose to speak, please indicate in the chat box, or if you are on the phone by star nine, that you would like to speak. I do want to remind everyone at this time, all members of the public are to remain muted unless called on. They are to remain muted throughout the meeting unless called on to speak. When you are called on to speak, you'll have three minutes to speak, and please start with your name and address for the record. Don, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
We do. Mike Thomas, please unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Thanks. Mike Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive, SE. Want to briefly comment on the past two city council meetings, both the one that where the water system plan was ratified and the last one where there was action undertaken. On the water system plan meeting, I'm extremely disappointed in the level of discussion that took place on an item of such criticality. Water system plans come every 10 years. There were no substantial questions. Two council members were absent. There was no reading of letters received from the two tribes from a homeowners association that was represented by an attorney and other matters. This is not the kind of oversight that we expect as citizens in our council. There needs to be a lot more questioning on the matter, and it's not something that I like to see. With respect to the previous meeting last Tuesday, where a very controversial regulation was adopted directing, you know, staff to do a franchise agreement, it's one of those penalties against a well-loved and respected water purveyor nearby. It wasn't sufficient notice for the public to comment, or others to comment, on such a controversial ordinance. And I think it's echoes of abuses of police power. Now, the city really should not be doing this at such a fast rate, and public needs and other need time to comment and digest. The city has used its powers in this way in the past, such as by borrowing a tattoo artist, applies its regulations against a truck stop. What's next, guys? This is not what we expect as citizens, and it sends a message of regulatory instability to businesses that want to be here. Is my business next? And it sends, you know, a message to other people here. Now, what's your next, what's your next thing that you're going to try to outlaw and abuse your powers on? But, you know, why are we here to begin with? You know, we're here as a result on water, as a result of seminal problems more than 35 years ago, where the city failed to recognize the limits of its water system, water rights. And we haven't really seen, you know, any progress to add more water, whether that's mitigation water or drinking water. We see huge distribution losses. We have, you have nothing to show for more than 15 years of advanced engineering and planning. And this is very disturbing to us as citizens. I don't know how we can move forward as a city, both business-wise and for residents that want stability. You know, do we have enough water to water our gardens? What if people that want to develop? What if business development? It's important that we be able to move forward with this, and I don't see any credible execution. There's nothing to show for this, and I'm very sorry to say that. And it's very important that when you consider what you're doing on water, you're touching something very visceral. We are so much made of water.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Thomas.
Water, water is life, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Elizabeth Davis, please unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Elizabeth Davis, 225 Taylor Avenue, South, North Bend. I just wanted to, I wanted to comment last, on your last Tuesday meeting, which wasn't published for public comments, but I wanted to thank all of you city council members for protecting those of us that live within the city water district. And I know water is an issue. I've, I actually have in your packet, I'm sure you have my email regarding the water use efficiency goals, which will come up later in today's thing. But I would like to thank all of you. You guys are fabulous. You do a hard, hard job. You can't please everyone, but you do, I, I really admire every single one of you. Thank you so much, and I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Do we have anyone else?
We do not have anybody else at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to announcements, presentations, and appointments. First up on tonight's agenda is a proclamation. Excuse me while I look to my screen to make sure that I read it right, but this is from the office of the mayor. And I do understand that we have a member related to this proclamation with us tonight, although I did not glance to see if they are here, but if so, that is Kathleen Murphy with King County. So Kathleen, if you're there, I'll call on you in a moment. First off, proclamation whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas an estimated 400,000 people in King County are affected by these conditions, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those need to, in need, to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas we recognize four dimensions of recovery from mental health and substance use disorders: health, home, purpose, and community. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, King County, and the City of North Bend invite all residents to participate in National Recovery Month. Now, therefore, I, Rob McFarland, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as National Recovery Month in the City of North Bend, and call upon all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies supporting this year's theme: Rise Above It All: Wellness, Resiliency, and Recovery. Kathleen, if you wanted to make just a few comments, you would be welcome to unmute.
Thank you so much, Mayor McFarland. My name is Kathleen Murphy. I'm the Behavioral Health Recovery Specialist with the King County Behavioral Health and Recovery Division. On behalf of people impacted by mental health and substance use disorders in King County and the citizens of North Bend, I thank you for your leadership and for proclaiming September 2020 National Recovery Month. Your recognition of Recovery Month is important as we join together to celebrate those in recovery and reduce the stigma and discrimination against those impacted with behavioral health conditions. As someone in recovery from both mental health and substance use disorders, I know firsthand how devastating social and interpersonal stigma can be and how it can keep people suffering in silence. Early intervention and access to services that meet the unique needs of individuals and families lead to better outcomes. We know that now more than ever, people need accessible and timely behavioral health services. Youth, adults, and family members impacted by behavioral health conditions in North Bend can access help by calling the 24-hour confidential crisis line, 8664CRISIS. I thank you, Mayor McFarland, and honorable council members for acknowledging and celebrating National Recovery Month. Today, you're playing a critical role in reducing stigma, improving the quality of life for your residents, and making North Bend a healthier community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. And the clerk will get out the official proclamation signed by me to you this coming week. Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to, we have a presentation tonight by the Snoqualmie Valley Transportation Group. Amy Biggs is here, I believe, and we're going to turn it over to her in a moment to do a presentation. We've asked her to keep it fairly short, focused, and leave some time for questions from council. This is an item that has, transportation's always an issue for us here in the valley, but it's become particularly acute with COVID, and so it seems like a timely topic. Don, I'll leave it to you and Amy.
Amy does not appear to have joined the meeting yet.
Ah, okay.
Your voice, your vocal, Jesse, is very interesting, but hard to understand.
Jesse, get your you-know-what together. Try it again.
I suggest that he had received a message from her that she's either late or not able to make it this evening, so I suggest that we go on with the rest of the agenda.
We'll, we'll move on from there. Thanks. Very, very interesting.
And Jesse will not do any more Darth Vader impressions this evening, I promise.
Good evening. Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to item number 14, AB20-117. This is a public hearing, a resolution adopting water use efficiency goals. First, they'll ask for the staff report, then we will open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then move to council discussion. So with that, Mr. Regos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city council. Tonight, I'm going to pass the microphone to city engineer Don DeBerg for a quick staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mark, and Mayor. So before you tonight is a resolution adopting water use efficiency goals. This is required every six years, and the last time we did this was in 2015. Since then, we have nearly reached our goal, but not quite there yet. So, yeah. So anyhow, we are setting new goals. This is in conjunction with the water system plan. These goals are actually discussed in chapter five of the water system plan. So the goals we're proposing tonight are two goals, actually. One is a demand-side goal of reducing average day demand per equivalent residential unit. So this one is going to apply to residences and to commercial businesses. So we're asking for a 0.75% reduction per month, or excuse me, per day in water use. So that's about 1.18 gallons per day per single-family home. And the other one, which we actually have already adopted in June of this year, is to reduce distribution system leakage by 10%, excuse me, to 10% by 2026. So that's a demand-side goal. That's something that the city is going to do by various means, namely water line replacement, customer side meter replacement, so on and so forth. So projected water savings from both of these goals are about 332 million gallons in 10 years. So it's not an insignificant amount of water, and we are looking forward to getting these adopted this year. Thank you.
Mr. DeBerg, Mr. Regos, did you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. Any clarifying questions from council before we open the public hearing? Mr. Garcia.
I guess one of the big things that we've talked about, to me, is, is the leakage. I know we had a pretty big victory earlier this year by fixing the 412th Street pipeline, but 10 years is, is a long time for these goals, and I understand that's the plan. But I would like to make sure that we still keep a concentrated effort to get these numbers down sooner than later. The leakage is, is a big issue. I don't know if we have an update on when we're going to start replacing meters, but I know that was spelled out in the, in the plan and, and in the resolution that we passed earlier this year.
Yeah, so if I can speak to that, we, we've already started replacing meters. We've got everything from the Mount Si Spring plant to about 8th Street done already. So that's where the oldest meters were. So those are all brand-new meters now. We're continuing on with the 15-year plan that council previously authorized, while at the same time looking at ways to accelerate that program within the allowable budget. So we are looking at ways to, to quicken that up.
Does that address your questions, Mr. Garcia?
Well, are the ones on 8th Street the one we did like two years ago?
I, I believe those ones were just done earlier this year.
Okay.
We're, we're working our way in the town. We're working from north to south at the moment.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, in regards to the, what is seven, seven tenths of a percent? I'd like to make sure that we look at things we could do for new residential builds and commercial builds to help kind of guide those, those things along. We've kind of talked about that at TPW in the past, but I think maybe we need to move some of that stuff over to see, get some codes on, in the books to.
Sorry, Mr. Garcia. Is that a question? This is just clarifying questions versus discussion around the motion.
Yeah. So my, I guess my question is, is when can we, when can we start to have those discussions?
Thank you.
Honestly, that, that question would be better answered by the building department, as I think the uniform plumbing code handles most of that stuff. I believe the plumbing code is geared towards more efficient fixtures and homes, so more efficient faucets, dishwashers, so on and so forth. So I believe, I believe the plumbing code does tackle that. If, if we wish to go above and beyond that, that would be an issue for the building department to take up, I think.
I saw Ms. Collins hand up.
Yeah, my question is the education campaign, and I don't know if this is appropriate or possible, but could we get the schools, the teachers, to start educating their students about water conservation and being good stewards for their town of North Bend?
That's a very good idea and something that I will discuss with our executive team.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did I see another hand? Mr. God help, did you? Oh, okay. Glancing around, a lot of folks on the screen tonight. Not seeing any other questions. So with that, we will open the public hearing at 7:22. And if there's anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on this item, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine if you are on the phone, and we will call upon you. When called upon, you may unmute. You'll have three minutes. Again, start with your name and address for the record. Don?
Elizabeth Davis, please unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Elizabeth Davis, 225 Taylor Avenue, South, North Bend. And you, I did send an email to Susie. I think she included it in the packets. I, is, nod your head, Susie, so I can see that, I hope. And I'm, I think this is a wonderful goal. Okay, it's just, it's a wonderful, wonderful goal. However, I am going to be all about me in that I am a single individual. I have the low-flow toilets. I have the hot water tanks that are low-flow. I do everything I can, and I'm supposed to reduce by, again, by another gallon and an eighth a day, or whatever it is. I'm just a little concerned about that. Just concerned, not alarmed, but concerned. And I would like to, I put in my thing, how are you going to keep track of this? And can you let us know when we go over? I will say that every other year for two weeks at Christmas, I have eight people in my house instead of one. What's going to happen then? Now, that is not summertime watering. That is just teenagers taking showers. And are you going to penalize people that have four people in the house as compared to one person in the house? Just things for you to consider as you draw up this plan. Thank you so much. That's enough.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Mike Thomas, please unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Thanks. Mike Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive, SE. Counsel, you have my written comment. As part of the record, I would encourage members of the public to actually request that from the city. It didn't make it into the packet. I'm very concerned that this is an inappropriate meeting and doesn't meet the requirements for a water use efficiency goal-setting meeting per the WAC 246-29830. You're, you're missing information about the city's past annual water use efficiency reports. These are reports that the city is required to file every year with DOH, and they don't match what's in your water system plan, and I find that to be extremely odd. But there's also a sad story here to relate. From the moment the new city well was commissioned, there's a huge discrepancy in 2009 and a suspected problem with production-side metering, and that may have masked distribution losses for years. This wasn't even detected until late 2017. We're talking about years, perhaps going back even beyond 2009, of masked water losses as well as misreporting of metering at Mount Si, including consumption and bypass flow to Snoqualmie, which is required by law and may be a water rights violation. This, this error, though, has cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars and ratepayers hundreds of thousands of dollars, and lost opportunity. You're not getting as much water from the variable speed pump project, which you really needed. Is it the genesis of the water conservation ordinance? I mean, this, this is an amazing item. Has there been negligence in the water system operation? Has there been negligence or error in the design and engineering of this? This is a huge issue, and there's a story here to look at and investigate. It's a real problem, and it strikes the credibility that this is not discussed in the 2020 water system plan. There are items that were discussed in the 2010 system plan that talk about some of the problems you had at Mount Si Springs. There's an extensive discussion of your 2019 metering problem where you didn't mitigate for 42 days. Production-side metering is a critical component of water use efficiency, and I don't see a proper discussion of this in your water system plan or water use efficiency sections in the WSP. It's a real problem, and it strikes to how can we, can we trust you? You need to come forward with what happened here and discuss this more openly. It's a problem when we see this. You need to explain this. In 2015, you reported negative 8.5% distribution loss. Impossible. This is not what's in your water system plan, and it's important to consider that you need to address this and discuss this more openly. Thank you very much, and I look forward to your comments. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? Don, no one?
Nobody else.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion. Mr. Rosen, I believe this came through your committee?
Yes. Motion to approve AB20-117, a resolution adopting water use efficiency goals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Did that come from Mr. Loudback?
It did.
Thank you very much. Motion by Mr. Rosen, second by Mr. Loudback. Discussion, Mr. Rosen, would you speak to this, please?
I think staff summed it up, did a good job. I believe one of the citizens had a concern. I think she felt that there was going to be specific penalties attached to this. I'll ask staff to just clarify. These are goals, and there won't be specific penalties to individuals on the one gallon or so a day. Can we clarify that a little bit, if you don't mind? That's correct. Okay.
Yeah, so as Mark said, that's correct. This is a citywide goal, so we look at it as an average for the entire city. We don't get down to the granularity of looking at individual accounts, individual usage. It's citywide average. So that's all we're going for here.
Thank you. I just wanted to address her concern there. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Mr. Loudback, did you have anything to add?
Not tonight, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you. And other counsel, scanning, Mr. Garcia.
Well, I guess there's a question if this is a legal reading of this. So we have two attorneys here. Somebody.
Mr. Canyon is our attorney this evening.
I am wholly confident with the legality of the process the city's gone through so far.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Mr. Garcia.
Don, you mentioned that we hadn't quite reached our goals in the last round on this. How far off are we? And I guess I do want to make sure of these. How far off are we? And I guess I do want to make sure these, these goals seem achievable. Is, are, are we setting ourselves set to what is appropriate?
Yes, I'm unmuted. Okay. So the previous goals were to reduce per capita use for single-family accounts from fifty-seven gallons per day to fifty-two gallons per day by the end of, by the end of the period. We're actually about a year earlier than that goal hadn't anticipated. But we did get down to fifty-two point nine gallons per day, so we're about a gallon a day short of the previous goal. These goals that we're proposing, I'm wholly confident that we're going to be able to meet them. Again, it's just a little over a gallon per day per ERU. So with some education, with the water conservation ordinance, I'm wholly confident that we're going to be able to meet these.
Thank you, Mr. God help.
Yeah, I mean, as this being a citywide, like, average things, what, I mean, we talked a little bit and we didn't get, we should probably talk further in some sort of work study because ours thinks of things beyond the standard plumbing code that we can enact on new homes to get more efficiency. But also, I don't know, years ago, we had an ability where we gave, we got a bunch of rain barrels and put those out. So my curiosity is, you know, maybe we should get a little bit more, get creative amongst the council on things that we can help to, to be able to achieve those goals.
Thank you. Great comment. Anyone else? Seeing none, motion before you is to approve AB two zero dash one-one-seven, a resolution adopting water use efficiency goals. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. And with that, we will move on to agenda item fifteen, AB two zero dash one-one-eight, a resolution authorizing a development agreement with Si View MPD for Tollgate Farmstead. Mr. Miller?
Yes, Your Honor and counsel, this is a development agreement that is being brought to you to serve a project the Si View Metropolitan Park District is proposing. Those are improvements to Tollgate Farm Park include a new barn, parking area, agricultural wash station in the vicinity of the Tollgate Farmhouse, as well as a reconfigured driveway entrance into the side off of Bendigo Boulevard. It's funded by the two thousand eighteen Si View Parks Bond and is known as the Farmstead Improvements. Because of the size of the property frontage, extensive amount of overhead utilities and nature of the street frontage on Bendigo Boulevard, including a bridge over Ribberry Creek, undergrounding the overhead utility lines and providing a conventional street frontage improvement would be highly complicated and costly and also out of character with the USOD rural area that's represented by the farmhouse and the surrounding improvements. So Si View has opined to us to waive the requirement for undergrounding the overhead utilities. This DA came before the planning commission. They provided a recommendation of approval on the development agreement following a public hearing at their July twenty-third, twenty twenty meeting. And the CED committee recommended approval at their August eighteenth meeting. Be happy to try and answer any questions you might have.
Any clarifying questions before we move to public comment? See, oh, there's Ms. Cohen, thank you.
So the parking, where the parking is going to go, that is directly off Bendigo Boulevard? Is that correct?
Yes, the parking is accessed from a driveway off of Bendigo Boulevard. And then there's actually a parking lot on the site plan that provides for turnaround and maneuvering onsite.
And so, Mr. Miller, is the, is the access to that parking lot off of Bendigo or off of Eighth?
I'd have to look at the plan again, but you know how we have it right now? We have people coming down that driveway off of Bendigo.
Yes.
And for this improvement, for this particular first phase, that is being improved. And the access is going to be a little easier to get in and out of. But we're not coming off of Eighth to access it at this point. In the future, I think there are some improvements that will allow that to happen.
Sorry, Ms. Cohen, you have the floor. I wanted to clarify your question.
That's my concern is that, that's a really, really busy road at certain times of day and it would be hard, really hard to, maybe be hard get in and out of, not get in, but to get out of, back onto the street.
Yeah, we understand that. We did have some traffic analysis done. I don't think there, there, there aren't a terrific number of parking spots. It'll be safer than it is today, but it's not the ideal solution.
Under correct, Ms. Miller?
Hi, everybody. One of my concerns was maybe could we think about a left-hand turn lane or some sort of access out that would help us from that area because that parking area will be a, a problem I see over time, over time.
Right, we could look into that. We've got to get the approval of Wash Stop for that since it's a state highway. So the process will be a little more lengthy than if we had full control.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing none, we will make the available for public comment. If you wanted to comment on this item, indicate in the chat box or star nine on your phone.
No comments, Your Honor.
No comments, thank you very much. With no comment, then I will look to Mr. Lounback. I believe this came through your committee. Would you like to make the motion?
It did indeed, Your Honor, thank you. A motion to approve AB two zero dash one-one-eight, a resolution authorizing development agreement with the Si View Metropolitan Parks District for the Tollgate Farmstead Improvements.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Miss Miller? Thank you very much. And Mr. Lounback, would you like to elaborate on this decision or anything that you've heard this evening?
I think during the course of consideration of this project, I, I'm very impressed by Si View's plan. This is the first iteration with the, the driveway and the parking, the exciting addition of a new barn and the ability to get more full utilization of the property and bring the community out into the facility and, and enjoying Tollgate Park is, is really great. So I think they're in the right direction. Looking forward to seeing a completion of this project and I would recommend a due pass.
Thank you, Ms. Lounback. Ms. Miller, you were the second? Got unmute?
I couldn't agree more. This is a very exciting plan that has taken many years to come to fruition. I've been in full support of it. And these nuances and these changes are, are coming together. So we're working together to help celebrate the historical value of that very special property. And maybe we can make it more of an educational facility as well, which was part of the plan. So looking forward to all that. Thank you.
General discussion. Mr. Garcia.
I think one thing that's becoming a repeating theme is the issue of the power lines are too costly to, to take care of in, in some of the projects around town. Like us to see if we might look at what we're requiring and if there's a way to, I don't know, maybe there's an underground utility fee where it's less of a burden on the developer on these smaller projects that still goes to undergrounding some utilities. I know there's some programs that the city could work with PSE and most likely Tanner Electric to pool resources, but I think in, in like this case, I mean, it would be a whole street that they would have to, to do. And I just kind of feel like that's an unfair ask. And some of the, the, some of these poles and stuff are in bad shape and, and replacing those becomes costly. And so I think we do this, which is, which is, I agree, is the right thing to do to, to get a good project. But like I said, maybe there's a way that we charge at, I don't know, I don't want to call it a GFC, but a fee and lieu, which would still get us some bang for our buck. It might not be next to that person's development. But I think that even some of the people that can't afford this, we're going to end up with utility wires underground, back up, back over, under, right, it's going to become a hodgepodge. And by maybe doing this, we could get a more cohesive line that once they start to go under, they just continue down the, down the line.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Just to, just to clarify what I'm, from what you've expressed, you're expressing a general comment concern about overhead, not suggesting an amendment to this. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, a little quiet out there tonight. Um, I'm going to say I'm excited about the project, you know, not, not commenting to the overheads or the access or the parking, but more the programmatic moving forward. From the time I arrived in the valley, I've been fascinated by the story of the Tollgate and the, and the farmhouse there. I've been, was disappointed as some of you on council and staff would know and how long it's taken us to see this move forward. So I'm thrilled with the partnership with the park district and seeing them finding a way to, to move this forward. And as Ms. Miller said, to start using this in an educational way. I had a background in, in, in historical farming from, well, when I was historical. And, and it's just so many opportunities for us here in the valley, for schoolchildren, for our population, for, for everyone to enjoy this facility in a different way. So I'm excited to see it moving forward. And with that, the motion before you is to approve AB two zero dash one-one-eight, a resolution authorizing a development agreement with the Si View Metropolitan Park District for the Tollgate Farmstead Improvements. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, no.
And the motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you very much for that. And with that, we will be moving on to agenda item number sixteen. Number sixteen is a motion authorizing lien foreclosure on Ulid number six assessments. Mr. Kenyon, I see this is in your court.
I think the city clerk has tricked me because my number sixteen is an ordinance amending the U sod. But happy to take this up. It's fairly simple, actually, counsel. The Ulid six, of course, as you know, the revenue bonds were issued to pay for that. The legislature, I think, in its, in its wisdom, has correctly included a provision in state law that says if assessments are delinquent for two or more years, or actually, when they become delinquent for two years, the city shall, and that's the verb used in the statute, institute foreclosure proceedings to collect the delinquencies. It makes sense policy-wise when you think about it because those revenue bonds are supported by the assessments. And if we don't get the assessments, we could have, we're now, we're near that, but we could have some bond default issues. So this is a simple motion asking for the mayor's authorization, mayor authorized me to file the foreclosure lawsuit. Let me just finish briefly, then I'll take your question, Jonathan. There are a total of five parcels, four of them are under one ownership, and we had a phone call from that owner today. He plans to come in and pay that off this week, so we should be down just to one parcel.
We passed this on the consent agenda.
That's what I thought.
I'm seeing that.
Mr. Kenyon?
Yeah, can I keep talking, though? I mean, I just, I love to hear myself.
Well, it's interesting because I would have sworn that I read item number sixteen, but you are correct. It was passed on the consent agenda, so my apologies to the group as a whole. We'll move immediately on to actual item number sixteen, AB two zero dash one-one-nine, an ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code eighteen dot ten dot oh-three-oh regarding hotels and storage in the USOD. Mr. Miller?
Yes, Your Honor and City Council, you will recall that this was a subject that you wrestled with a few weeks ago. And you had asked us to take the urban separator overlay district in the Meadowbrook area and to take a look at a couple of uses that by consensus, I believe, the council felt should be examined as to whether or not they belong in that overlay district or not. And those two were indoor and outdoor storage and hotels. So we took the permitted use tables in the NB zone under the urban overlay district. And we took that to the planning commission after notifying the property owners of the potential action. And the planning commission held a public hearing on this item on August thirteenth. And their recommendation after hearing the property owner's testimony was denial of the proposed amendment four to one consistent with the majority of public comments received. I will say that the dissenting comment was by the planning commissioner was in favor of the more rural atmosphere in the Meadowbrook area, and that was her justification for wanting those to be removed. That being said, the planning commission voted for one to not remove them. We, there were oral arguments were presented and written comments presented to the planning commission. The issue then went to the CED committee to consider whether or not those two land uses should be eliminated from the USOD zone. And after some discussion, the CED committee felt that they would send this forward supporting the planning commission vote to not remove the two uses. So you have kind of an interesting situation here in that you've had a recommendation from two bodies not to remove the uses, yet your motion is to approve AB twenty dash one-one-nine, an ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code Table eighteen ten oh-three-oh permitted and conditional uses relating to storage and hotel you, uses as a first and final reading. So there, there is public comment to be received. And should you decide to go forward, you would follow that motion and vote aye. If you decide to follow the recommendation of the commission and the CED committee, you would be voting no. I'm just clarifying that because the motion is in the aye direction to remove those uses.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. That's an important distinction because it is kind of the reverse of the typical. So with that, I will ask if any council member has any clarifying questions before we move to public comment. Not seeing a hand. Okay, Dawn, do we have anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item?
We do. Wendy Miller, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Do I need to give my address?
Please do.
Wendy Miller, six-eight-one-four Denny Peak Drive, Southeast Snoqualmie, Washington. We also property owners at one-four-two-two Bendigo Boulevard North. We started this process of the Ulid over two years ago with what I thought was some good momentum and support from the city council. Now that we're getting closer to fruition, there seems to be some second guessing and moving at the goalposts. I'd like the council to think about two things and I'll be here on Tuesdays to continue to remind you until the appraisal comes back up for vote. First, at the planning commission meeting, the push to further down zone the USOD was not well received, not only from the owners in the USOD, but by many in the Meadowbrook area. The council absolutely has the ability to change the zoning of the parcels in the Meadowbrook USOD in contrast to what the planning commission and city staff suggest. But there are certain things the council should take into account, such as what are the financial and business benefits or drawbacks? I'm perplexed over the why the council would want to prohibit businesses coming to the area, especially trying to exclude hotels when there are already heightened design restrictions. Hotels provide many jobs and we are near major ski slopes, a casino and a soon-to-be-built sports facility, all of which will bring visitors to the city to spend money and then leave. Those visitors need a temporary place to stay. Second, the more you restrict the uses of our properties, the more you devalue our properties. For those trying to sell, it will become much more difficult or impossible, especially when they don't have sewer, which is already detrimental to the value of their property. Additionally, when we finally get the appraisal portion of the Ulid, if you continue to devalue our properties, we also run the risk of our property. if you continue to devalue our properties, we also run the risk of our property's benefit value not exceeding the cost of the sewer, which will kill the Ulid and affect everyone in the Meadowbrook area. So by too many regulations, can't build with no sewer, we're limiting the use of property, further zoning restrictions, the city literally destroys any reasonable economic use of the property. We can't build and we can't sell, not only in the USOD, but ultimately the entire Meadowbrook ULID area. You all received an email from Carol Tennant, whose family owns some of the largest parcels in the Meadowbrook area. Apart from her letter, I'd like to share with what she emailed to me, and I quote, "My husband, John, put his life into this property issue after he retired and attempted to get approval for numerous usage plans. Every effort was met with additional restrictions and refusals. He passed away four years ago without realizing any final results from years of his efforts on the undeveloped property next to Nintendo. Back in January, council member Garcia asked me what I was going to do on Tuesday night since my development agreement amendment was passed. Well, I'm back fighting for all my neighbors to get sewer out to our properties, but that has been promised to us for far too many years. So our neighbors like John and Carol's family can finally generate some sort of economic use for their property. I will leave you again with the support for the Ulid is overwhelming, the need is obvious, the decrease in environmental impact is critical, and the ability to bring new businesses and tax revenues is beneficial to the entire North Bend community. I'm hopeful that you all will continue to receive the emails and messages from the decisive majority of owners in the Meadowbrook area that you should reject this downzone of the USOD parcels and vote to support the Ulid when represented." Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else to ask?
We do not.
Do not. Okay, with that, I'll be looking for a motion. Mr. Longback, looks like this came through your committee again.
It did. The motion is written as Mr. Miller described. The motion to is to approve AB 20-119, an ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code Table 18 dot 10 dot 030, permitted and conditional uses related to storage and hotel uses as a first and final reading. I, as the CED-
Can I get a second before you go on, Mr. Longback?
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a second for Mr. Elwood. Now, back to you, sir.
Thank you. In consideration and review of the record from the planning commission in the public hearing and in, in reviewing the materials before us, the CED committee, which was comprised of Ms. Cullen and myself at the time, we would recommend do not pass to this particular ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Longback. Mr. Elwood, you have a second? Not hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
I forget, I have to unmute my phone and then hit star six as a second unmute. I must really need to be quiet tonight. I would, I would con-
I'll ask you again.
How about that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I think one of the, I'm getting distracted by the muting. I would agree with my colleague's sentiment. This, this was an interesting topic. We had a lengthy discussion about it a while ago. And we essentially did the right thing, which is kicked it back to the committees, had them process it. And I really encourage all my colleagues to, to listen to their recommendations as well as some of the public testimony, especially when you have a letter from somebody whose family has been here since 1883, that, that's kind of hard to ignore. So I'm just like to add that to our commentary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elwood. Mr. Garcia, I saw your hand first.
I would, I'd like to make a motion to amend the amendment to allow for hotels.
Not sure I'm following your amendment.
So I'd like to amend the motion, or I'd like to amend the ordinance to-
To take out-
Keep hotels as an allowed use.
Yeah.
So you would want to strike that on the motion.
Strike that and keeping storage.
Yeah, I, like, I, I feel like a hotel out there-
Let's see, we can get Mr. Longback. So it's a friendly amendment to the motion.
Friendly.
Yep.
Just making-
Friendly.
Toss up.
Given, given the unfriendly nature of Mr. Garcia's amendment, I would recommend that we vote no on the entire package as it's currently written. But he's certainly free to make his amendment.
Do we have a second for the amendment?
We'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Godhill. And I'm sorry, Mr. Garcia, now go ahead with, with your commentarity on the motion.
I feel like a hotel would, as stated, would be regulated by bulked conventional standards. My, my big fear about storage is this is an entryway to our town. And I'd hate it to be lined with, with storage. They don't create jobs. It might create a job or two. So I don't, I don't know. I, I, I'd be willing to look at it as a storage unit, as a developer agreement, potentially for some of the parcels that were off of the main road. But I know that's getting a little bit into the weeds, and so I'm gonna hesitate to throw that out there. I could also live with not changing this at all, so.
Thank you. Other commentators, so we do have a, an amendment on there, so keep that in mind. But we'll take all comments. Mr. Rosen?
Yeah, I understand that we are limiting some uses. But if you look at the big picture, we're limiting two uses out of vast number more that are still allowed. We're not curtailing a lot of development opportunities. With that being said, my biggest concern is this is our gateway. It is kind of a pristine area right now. And I'm concerned with how the public would feel with development out there. I think that's what's driving most of this is where the citizens are on this issue. I'm not sure that storage facilities out there would be preferable to what is there now. But certainly, I could live with some conversation about hotels. I think there's some areas that might work better out there. It's one large area we're trying to determine with hotels. But I think there are some parts of that area out there that could take a hotel without really changing the view shed as people come into town. So, but overall, I just think it's important that we think about what the citizens are going to want to see out there. And I am concerned that especially storage facilities, I just don't see that as being an override demand from our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Anyone else? Mr. Godhill?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to agree with, with both Mr. Rosen and Mr. Garcia. I re, you know, I understand that most of the people here are in favor of it. And I see why, and I think there's some valid reasons. My concern comes from the standpoint of attending multiple open, what do we call them? Open sessions where we brought the public in. And one of the overriding art features or comments by most of the public at all those open houses were to make sure that we kept the rural community and that we didn't, you know, we made sure that our entry into this community was kept in that way. I think when people voted for, to, to purchase that area out there, the tollgate, I think they meant it to be open land and try to keep it mostly rural. And my concern is, yes, it's an important thing, and I want to see people and businesses thrive out there. But is it, do we really want to see, you know, um, you know, a storage lot sitting out in that beautiful pristine area? And that was my only concern. And that's where I'm at.
Anyone else? Mr. Elwood?
I accidentally muted myself.
Yep.
I accidentally muted myself. I just have a quick question for staff then. Have we had requests for, or interest in putting storage out there that has come across anybody's desk?
The only, the only thing that's come across our desk is there was an individual who wanted to take the old Chinook lumberyard and convert that into a car brokerage to store cars there and sell them. And they want sewer because they want to build a building to house the cars in. But they would like to be able to start by acquiring it and storing the vehicles on the site. That's the only thing I've heard of in the area.
Thank you. Mr. Elwood, any follow up?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Miller? And unmute?
I go again. There you go. Hi there. Dave, with that being said, is there, has there been any commentary about hotels or motels in that area?
Well, the, you know, the Wyndham people have been looking around. And the, the problems that we've heard from them is that at both exits, there is no land available that people are willing to sell. That's where they prefer to have a hotel. But because of the sports fields that are going in and the proximity of the casino, they're interested in looking at that area. Now, today I heard from them, I, I got them together with the outlet mall folks, and I think they're working on a ground lease to see if that will work. But they just weighed in on the area and said it would be an attractive area to look at because of the, the users that would be nearby.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Rosen?
Yeah, Mr. Miller, you might be up to this best. Exactly where could a hotel go right now with the current zoning map that we have?
If you, if you look at your zoning map, I wish I could turn it around, put it in front of you. But the area that we're talking about, you know, the majority of the Meadowbrook area is open space.
Right.
There is an area that is to the east, well, actually would be toward the south of, of the whole study area that has half acre lots. And then the third zoning out there is the neighborhood commercial blue area. That's the only area within which you could place a hotel. So if you were looking at that map, you'd have to be within the confines of that blue area.
Okay, so the blue area, which is kind of in the center of the zone, and then the other section is towards downtown.
That is-
Those are the two areas you could go in. And those are the only two areas, am I correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
I think my biggest issue with the storage too is, I mean, we have a storage facility as you come into town that's off of 202 that's pretty unsightly. And a lot of people complain about it. So I, that's, that's, that's my big fear of, of allowing the storage. Dave, would, would we have codes in place to avoid something like that? I, I guess what I don't want to see is, is 202 turn into Highway 99 as you drive from Snoqualmie, past Meadowbrook, past Tollgate, and then wham, there we go. It's unfortunately what we have there now, but I'd hate to see that expand.
I, I believe you're asking, do we have standards in place with the new development to control that? To provide for landscaping and screening and all of that and architectural treatment? Yes, we do. Now, if you're talking about the area where all the vehicles are located, which I find very unsightly, that has become a storage area and is the subject of a code enforcement action right now that is not permitted. It's a junkyard now, and you can't do that kind of thing in the zone. And even if you could, there are stormwater regulations that have to be met to make sure the liquids from those vehicles do not go down into the groundwater. So that has been a failure to meet the current zoning standards, which has resulted in a code enforcement action. And many, if not most, of those cars have to be moved. And they're only allowed to keep the cars out that they're working on for clients, not store cars there, you know, for months.
Well, yeah, Dave, I appreciate that, but it's been there for a long time.
Well, we're working on it. We have a code enforcement letter out there. And one of the letters back to you from one of the attorneys cites not only the land use action, but the enforcement action and is complaining about that. So, I mean, we do have somebody's attention.
I, I guess I'm going to step out of line a little bit here and ask a question because we do have some public here. I know that the open comment has gone by, but I'm wondering if we might allow some of the people that live in town but are not property owners, if they might want to weigh in on their thoughts of the storage? Or are you going to just, and if it's answers no, then the answer is no.
I'm going to be paused and think about that a minute, Mr. Garcia. It is a little bit out of order, certainly not disallowed. But before we, before we consider that, I wanted to make sure that your question was being answered fully. Because what I'm hearing is you're asking about would this change or not in the allowable use impact the existing use? And I think that's an important distinction. So I'm going to ask Mr. Miller first off, the idea of the difference of, of the code enforcement versus whether a, you know, this is regarding new development, not in existing use. And then I do want to point out to you also, I believe a couple of your staff members are trying to flag a couple of clarifications, Steve.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the note from Jesse. That is, his note was relative to design standards that would be employed with new uses. And when you're talking about changing land uses, you're looking at not only what exists there now, but what you could permit in the future. So in the future, we do have the kinds of standards that could make the use look attractive. And the distinction I'm trying to make is when you have somebody that violates the code and they're putting unsightly junkyard in an illegal location, you have to enforce. We've just started that. We don't, we don't have a lot of code enforcement bandwidth because our building official does all of it. But we did get together with the highway patrol who also deal with and regulate junkyards, and we are involved in an enforcement there. You also have another storage area out there that looks a lot better than the, the junkyard. And those are fairly recent design standards, but we beat them up significantly since I've been here. So I do believe that you, you could protect the area.
So I believe what you're saying in regard to the existing use is, it's the difference between what we're feeling is a, a junkyard or a storage area used automobiles versus those cars being worked on it as an automotive repair shop.
That's correct.
You're making, so that the use itself might not change. Mr. Garcia, your hand was up again.
So I guess, I don't know if this is possible or not. Is there a way to restrict the amount of storage that's allowed out there?
I, you know, the way you would do that traditionally in a zoning ordinance is with a conditional use permit. And that requires a hearing officer's hearing in our code. But the conditional use permit is the strongest tool that you have for any zoning. And it allows you to condition the use because, I mean, it's called conditional use because it's not permitted as of right. It's only permitted by meeting the conditions of use that you apply to it. So whatever you would see those to be appropriate from, from a aesthetic point of view, you can use those standards and apply them. And they'd have to go through the hearing process.
So Dave, is, is what you're telling me is that we could potentially change this to keep the hotels in the zone, take out the storage, which I think is kind of, everybody has a little bit of, I should say, everybody, those of us that are concerned about it. But then we could allow it down the road under a conditional use permit?
The way you do that is you just change the code. And, and if you look at our use table, it identifies if something requires a conditional use permit. So it's listed under uses that are permitted, but only with a conditional use permit. So if you were to take action to change the code and wanted to control the storage areas, you would say, I'd like to amend the motion to make storage areas permissible only with a conditional use permit.
So moved?
I'll second that one again. I'll second that one again.
Second motion.
That one's kind of friendly, huh, Ross?
Rob, if I can jump in here, we, we, we can amend an amendment, but my, my concern with this amendment is if this, if the ordinance is passed this way, we're going to have a gap where we don't have a conditional use permit process in place. So I think the, the better approach to address this conditional use permit issue is to come back with the second ordinance. Otherwise, I mean, if just, if it does, if this amendment passes, then five days after publication, we're going to have an ordinance that says you need a conditional use permit for this, but we don't have the ordinance ready to go on that.
Could we timestamp that, Mr. Kenyon? I, here's what I don't want to do. I don't want to hold up this ULET process anymore. There's been some letters to us borderline accusing us of not wanting the sewer to run out there, and there's nothing farther from the truth in my, for me at least. So I, I mean, I wholeheartedly support this. I, I've, I've had some conversations. I, I really feel like the block and dimensional and height standards we have make me fine with the hotel. The, the storage I have concern about, I, I don't think it's a great look on the main road. I would agree that the storage that's off of Bulge looks a lot better than the storage. It's, or the junkyard that's on 202. I'm also fairly protective of this employment zone getting eaten up by storage because that provides a job or none. So could we, could we condition that you couldn't even apply for the permit for 60 days and get the ordinance done? I don't know.
Here, here's a suggestion that I think will work is let's, let's go ahead and right now, the main motion is to adopt as a first and final. Let's vote on the amendments and then I think we need to, after we see what happens with the amendments, if we just change the main motion to be a first reading, then that gives us the chance to come back to get the work done in the next two weeks to make the necessary changes to add the conditional use permit provision for the, the storage units.
So let me comment here. I think I'm following you, but what I have is that we actually have now two amendments on the table, changing the, 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 the motion in different ways. And that's good, definitely getting a little confusing. So I want to talk, think, think that one through a little bit more. But as we do, I saw Mr. Elwood followed by Mr. Rosen.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I think I think Mr. Kenyon answered my question. I was trying to figure out where we are in this juggling around and what to do because it was getting confusing. So I, I think I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rosen.
Two things. Let's start the hotel. I'm looking at the zoning map. And the one area that's adjacent to downtown, I could see working for a hotel. The area that concerns me about a hotel is the one that's really basically right in the middle of this whole Meadowbrook area. So I don't know, Mr. Garcia, if at some point you'd like to revise your motion for the 73rd time and allow maybe a hotel of that one area. But putting it in the middle of the Meadowbrook area certainly concerns me as fitting in with the character of that area. Just a thought if you are interested in that.
I don't see the difference between that and any other building the same size of a hotel would be. I mean, I'm not talking about restricting development in the Meadowbrook area at all. I mean, that's, that's what we're, that's what the zoning of this is, is it's going to potentially be developed into something, anything that would be the same size as a hotel. So I'm not looking, I'm not looking to not allow development in the Meadowbrook area in any way, shape or form.
I understand that. It's, we're talking about only two issues out of many allowed uses. The other thing is if we want to talk about the storage yards, maybe an easy way, Rob, is just a head nod if people want storage out there, if they're interested in that, nod their head. And then we can go and see if we need to make this just a first reading tonight. If there's no support for storage facilities out there, we can at least clean that up tonight. Just a thought.
I'm going to turn to, to my parliamentary and Mr. Kenyon to, to guide us through this. Because again, what I'm seeing is that we've got a main motion, two amendments being offered to that motion, and then the, the third suggestion from him to handle the main motion as a first reading. So I want to, I want to understand the order and such. Mr. Elwood, did you want to get in before Mr. Kenyon speaks?
Yeah, Jamie was chiming in on the chat. I think it was a valid point. If somebody can check that out just to verify.
That, to clarify what, what Jamie, our senior planner, was discussing. In our municipal code, we do have a conditional use permit provision. And the only thing you do differently on this is instead of taking the storage away, you put a designation in the table, which makes it clear that those storage units are subject to a conditional use permit. And that process is already outlined in 1824-020 and following in terms of the criteria for submittal and processing.
Okay, so maybe, maybe we can make this simpler then. Counselor, I want to make sure we're all on the same page. So if you turn to page 195 in the packet, then this is a question for you, Dave. If, if, we'll start with the second amendment that Mr. Garcia made, and that's to permit storage units only with a conditional use permit. So looking at the table on page 195, Dave, then we would be saying for 229A, B, and C, we would change the P that is now stricken out, stricken P to just CUP. And that would, that would get us to see once that is amendment.
I was following along in my packet. That's page 197.
I've got on 195, and I, I see what you're saying, counselor, and you're right.
Okay, so then that, that alleviates my earlier concern that we'd have a, a gap.
Thank you. That was, that was exactly what I was thinking in regard to that one.
Okay, now, now, back to the, your question for me initially, Rob, we take them in reverse order. So the first matters the council would vote on when you're ready to vote is the second amendment, which is storage units with the CUP. Then we'll take the, the first amendment just to permit hotels and then the main.
Yep, okay. And, and I'm on board with that, and I'm following you just fine. So thank you very much for that. I'm looking, Mr. Rosen.
So storage facilities also include RV storage, boat storage, et cetera?
Yes, they would.
Well.
Mr. Garcia.
We, we could leave those out. That'd be a third motion, not one made by me, though.
Do you have lots of storage facilities in North Bend right now, just saying?
Well, there is a shortage of those facilities in particular.
Mr. Elwood.
My inclination would just be to do a cup CUP on all of them and just move ahead with that. Because either way, the same type of scrutiny will be there. And if it's something that we want, then it's something that can be conditioned, that it can be granted. But I'm kind of getting uncomfortable cherry picking some of these things, and I understand why. I mean, the footprint was the biggest thing that was holding me back a while ago because I was opposed to storage facilities as well. But I think the CUP actually will satisfy all of those. And we just move ahead with that.
Other question?
Guys, I gotta, I gotta tell you, it's all over the map tonight. I, I'm feeling that you, you may need a, a little bit different direction here altogether, whether that is a pass it as a first reading and, and, and send it back with these comments or an update by staff to make sure that it's right. I'm uncomfortable that we're catching everything. Or table it. I know there's an equal pressure for wanting to move this forward and, and wanting to make these tweaks. But I personally am feeling that we're, we're, we're bouncing around again on, on the topic, and, and I don't want us to come out of this meeting with anyone feeling that they did not fully understand what they were voting on. And so I'm just, I'm throwing that out there. I do also want to go back before we move to a, a vote. Mr. Garcia, you asked the question earlier if, if the, if the council was willing to reopen public comment. No, thank you. So with that dispense with, so again, I mean, you've heard my concern here. So looking for where we're at, Mr. Loudonback.
I believe Mr. Garcia called for the question, which is not debatable. Is that not correct, Mr. Kenyon? You're unmuted.
You're muted, Mr. Kenyon.
Correct. It's not debatable. It does require a second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Garcia, I did miss you calling the question. So you're calling the question on the second amendment?
I just thought all of it.
On the whole, whole shit match.
I'll second it.
And Mr. Loudonback seconded it, and so on favor of?
The second amendment.
Yeah, where, what exactly are we voting on?
What is the second amendment?
The CUP, the CUP for storage units is the second amendment that Mr. Garcia made.
So let me try and read it, and Mr. Garcia, I'll look to you to confirm that this was your second amendment after discussion. You, your amendment is to change in the table of allowable uses, numbers 2.29A, B, and C in the USOD from striking the P and changing that to CUP.
Yes.
Thank you. And your second on that motion was by whom? Mr. Loudonback, you agree with that? Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, those opposed?
Nay.
And one nay. Okay, the motion carries with Mr. Rosen descending. That moves us to the first amendment. The first amendment, as I understand it, was to, from the motion, strike the words "and hotel." Is that the motion, Mr. Garcia? Thank you. Who is the second on that motion? Mr. God help you agree? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, thank you. And we have then the final motion, which I believe, if I'm hearing correctly, after the conversation.
Attorney General Mayor?
Yes.
I, I don't know. Jonathan, did you vote aye on that last one because you had a hand going up late?
John, yeah.
You're muted, my friend.
Mr. Rosen, you're muted.
Yeah, just continue. I'm abstaining because I'm losing track of it all, so.
You abstained from the second amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Please, let's record that we had six ayes and one abstention. Mr. Rosen on the second amendment. Okay, now the current motion, the main motion, is to approve AB 20-119, an ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code Table 18.10.030, permitted and conditional land uses related to storage and hotel uses as a first and final reading as amended this evening. Mr. Garcia, was that your motion? Or Mr. Loudonback, I'm sorry.
It was my motion, just clarifying, Mr. Kenyon, given the amendments that are in place, the removal of the hotel, the removal of the hotel from the motion and the amendment creating the CUP on the storage units. If you vote in the affirmative for this, the net result is what?
Great question. So it's an ordinance amending. So if we take hotel out of the motion, that removes the stricken P from the table on 18103. So it effectively permits a hotel.
Okay, so we, by voting affirmative, by voting affirmatively, you're voting for a CUP and allowing hotels?
You're permitting hotels and you're permitting storage with a CUP.
Thank you for the clarification.
And that's if you vote affirmative now. Because the ordinance, all right, so the ordinance has been changed.
Yes.
Because the motion has been changed to strike "and hotel" from the, from the motion.
Okay.
And Mr. Loudonback, you're in agreement that is the motion on the table?
I, as I understand it with clarification, that is how I understand the motion. I just wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to have full understanding what we're voting on here.
Thank you. And Mr. Elwood, that was, you're the second, I believe?
Oh, no, I just, the clarification, first and final reading is in that motion?
Yes.
As I read it, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I want to know who the second was on the original motion. Ms. Miller, do you agree with the motion on the table?
You're muted, Mary.
Muted.
She was the second.
I do.
You do. Thank you. All right. And before the vote then, I'm hearing Mr. Rosen.
So we're voting to allow hotels and storage yards with conditional use.
Right.
Correct.
Yes.
That's what, let me restate that, Mr. Rosen, just to be sure. Again, I want to be absolutely clear. My understanding of the motion is that storage would be allowed, CUP. Hotels goes back to be in allowable use. There's not a cup on that.
Right, it's correct.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to reread the motion and ask for the vote. Okay. Motion is to approve AB 20-119, an ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code Table 18.10.030, permitted and conditional uses related to storage as a first and final reading as amended this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
That was a delay.
Yeah.
We were all waiting to make sure.
Yeah, and I'm waiting again. Those opposed?
Nay.
Aye, I missed, I, the motion carries, six to one, Mr. Rosen voting against. Okay, thank you very much. Now, let's see, we, earlier this evening, we added item number 17 to the agenda. Be moving to that. Following this item, we will be moving into executive session, just as a reminder to the audience. So item number 17 is a motion to confirm Rebecca Demming as North Bend Community and Economic Development Director, AB 20120. Mr. Elwood, I'm looking for a motion from you, sir.
Sure, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the city council.
Nope, not the, not amending.
That's not that one, not that one. Sorry, I lost my packet here. One moment, please. I don't know what the motion is.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve the confirmation of Rebecca Demming as the North Bend Community and Economic Development, Development Director.
Second.
Sorry, that took me a while to get there.
I have a, a motion by Mr. Elwood. I believe I heard Mr. Loudonback is second. Mr. Elwood, would you please, well, actually, let me back up here before we do this. Mr. Miller, did you want to make some comments?
Unmute.
You're muted, Dave.
I am sure glad we're approving a community and economic development director after that last issue. So it gives me great relief to hear you make that motion. So it gives me great relief to hear you make that motion. We really had a good process here. I've been through a lot of these in the past, and we had very few applicants till up to the end. And we ended up with seventeen. And out of those, we had five very good candidates, all of whom had been either at a deputy or a community development director level in at least one job. And in fact, in Rebecca's case, two jobs. And we went through a complete vetting by the C E D staff and the executive team. And then from there, we had a consensus and moved three of the five forward to meet with two council members, Loudonback and Elwood, along with the mayor and myself. And I'm really glad that we had that last interview because this is where Rebecca shown. She was really, really good. She defined herself in that interview. And it became clear to all of us that this was the person with the experience, was articulate, had a great background. She's got a master's degree in public administration and an undergraduate degree in urban planning from Cal Poly, one of the best schools in California for planning. And so I think that we have been blessed here. And I would be happy to answer any questions about her. I think it's good to hear from the council members who were involved in that last interview and maybe get their impressions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Elwood, before I turn to you, I do want to back up since this is an added item on the agenda. Make sure that we've made room for any public comment. And so if there's any member of the public that wanted to comment on this agenda item, please indicate in the chat box or star nine if you are on the phone. And we'll pause there just a moment. Ms. Mascow, if you see anyone.
There is nobody.
Thank you very much. Mr. Elwood, I'll turn it back to you, sir.
Thank you, and I want to say thank you to the mayor and and Dave for extending the courtesy for having us, a couple of us city council members interview these fine candidates. It wasn't a requirement, but we definitely appreciated the gesture and took advantage of it. And and as a result of that, made me feel really confident about the choice that is in front of everybody. There were three very good candidates. They all had really good backgrounds. But Rebecca really rose to the top, especially when we started thinking about cultural fits with, not only with our staff, but with the community, her ambition, her passion. This is a place where she and her family have long desired to to come. And that was clear and true in everything she said. And and we knew that she already had the qualifications, but just really hearing that that extra level of of passion, I just keep using that word, really, really spoke to us in great volume. So we were appreciative of the chance to interview them. And I do think that all of our, Mr. Loudonback and my alignment with the staff, the executive staff, that she was the best member, the best person to put in this position was great. So all to start the lines is what I wanted to say. Thank you. Mr. Loudonback, would you care to add anything?
Thank you, Mr. Elwood, I would echo his comments. We had an excellent opportunity to meet with three very fine candidates, any of whom were certainly qualified to aspire to the position. I think one of the things that Rebecca stood out for was her preparedness, her research into the city of North Bend, her attention to detail, her willingness to reach out, work with staff, and and very open, frank person who I think is going to be an excellent addition to our staff. So I would recommend it, do pass, and look forward to working with Rebecca in the future.
And, Mr. Loudonback, before we move forward, I want to first acknowledge this was reviewed also by the Finance and Administration Committee. Mr. Godhealth, you're the chair of that. I kind of stole the thunder of you being able to introduce it because Mr. Elwood had been on that interview committee. And so that's why I asked him to do that. So appreciate it if if you wanted to say anything before, I would certainly give you that.
Well, thank you. No, and Mr. Elwood was part of the finance committee, so we'll just extend it there. It's not a big deal. I'm more concerned with the character and the quality of the person that it looks like we are bringing forward. And I will echo the comments of both Mr. Elwood and Mr. Loudonback that I appreciate the opportunity that council members were able to be part of that conversation and be included in it, which makes it that much better and much sweeter to say that we move informative, move forward with this and be affirmative. And I call for a vote.
I think you're calling the question?
Yep.
All right, I've got a got another called question, and I do, I have a second. Second by Ms. Miller. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah.
I'm going to throw a comment even and even though we've called the question, if council won't slap me on the wrist. Because I did want to first thank both Mr. Loudonback and Mr. Elwood for taking essentially an entire day to be part of that interview process. I did think it was a very good conversation, and I appreciate them taking part in it. I appreciate council's recognition of the importance of that input. I also wanted to be sure that you had heard that within the overall interviews, Mr. Mr. Miller mentioned how many applicants we had, how many initial candidates that we interviewed. And Rebecca was the first or second choice of almost every single person who was part of two different interview panels, initial interview panels before the three finalists were interviewed by council and myself and Mr. Miller. So it really was finding the right person. And with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing now the motion is unanimous and passes. Thank you very much, and congratulations to Rebecca Deming. With that, on my notes here, we will be moving now into executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty two dot thirty dot one ten one I and to discuss performance of a public employee pursuant to R C W forty two dot thirty dot one one oh one G. The session will last approximately fifty minutes, and there will, there is not expected to be any action following the executive session. For those in the audience to understand, this means that staff is going to place you back into the lobby, the waiting room. You are welcome to stay there in the lobby if you choose to. And we will, once the meeting is ready to resume an open session, we would readmit you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Did you want to do Mayor, Council, and Administrator Concerns and Initiatives before your executive session?
Well, I didn't really want to. Yes, I'm sorry. You guys got me rattled after the discussion about USOD. Yes, Mayor, Council, and Administrator Concerns and Initiatives. Before we go to executive session, let's see here, Mr. Godhealth.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms., let's see, Ms. Miller?
Um, everybody keeps saying staying safe. I'll always keep saying that. All done.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, two things. I would just like to welcome back all the students of the Snoqualmie Valley School District and urge that our families are patient with each other because not only are the kiddos going through something they've never been through, but so are the parents. So kids, be patient with your parents. Parents, be patient with your kids.
You're here.
And I just always look forward to the fall season. And I know that this might be a little bit premature, but as your leaves start to fall, make sure you clean your storm drains, right, Don DeBerg?
That's correct, thank you.
That's all, that's all this evening.
Mr. Garcia, Mr. Rosen.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen?
Um, I'd just like to say I am proud of all of Washington and Oregon, which is where I am tonight. From big town to little town, everybody was wearing masks. Everybody was being respectful. And as a nurse and COVID, I really appreciate it. So good job, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Loudonback.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Heather, for all the things that you do as a nurse and dealing with COVID on the front lines. We certainly all appreciate that. You you're an example for all of us, and we certainly appreciate having you as a member of our body here tonight. And I just wanted to say we have the holiday weekend coming up. And I wish everybody be safe and enjoy it. It looks like we're going to have some warm weather, so when you're out by the river, please be careful and be cautious. The water's colder than it looks, and we don't want to have any accidents. So enjoy the weekend and take care of yourselves. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Loudonback, Mr. Elwood.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just continue wearing your mask and staying safe, that's that's a smart thing. Believe that it works, trust in it, and do it. Especially now that everybody's going back to school. We're putting people back into roofed environments, which is where it gets dangerous. And so I'm just concerned. But so far, I think a lot of people in our community are really taking this seriously. So I have no doubt that they will continue to do that and be patient and do what's right. So thank you to everybody for doing that. And then the other thing is, it's just funny, I don't, this meeting tonight seemed really choppy, and I don't know if it was just the time off. But even even myself having all these mute issues. So I apologize to the public, especially for my fumbling and anything else that seemed kind of disjointed. But thank you for your patience, and thank you for sticking with us through the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Elwood, good comment. Mr. Miller, would you like to round up staff comments?
No, I'm going to keep it short so we can get into executive session. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. So I've got just a couple of comments. I would echo all of the safety comments that other council members were making there, especially the the respect being shown for our healthcare workers and everybody's health. So that's that's greatly appreciated. The city will be hosting a special recycling event on Saturday, September twelfth, from nine AM to three PM at the Snoqualmie Middle School parking lot. This is a free event where you can recycle scrap metal, appliances, refrigerators, freezers, air conditioners, fluorescent bulbs, tubes, electronics, tires, batteries, all in one location. More information about this event is available on the news section of the city website. I also wanted to take note, and I'm very happy that Mr. DeBerg is here with us tonight and give the opportunity for Mr. Regus to say a comment as well. The city recently reserved, received notification from the Department of Ecology that the city's wastewater treatment plant has received the twenty nineteen wastewater treatment plant outstanding performance award. Of approximately three hundred wastewater treatment plants statewide, the city's plant is one of just one hundred and twenty five plants that achieve full compliance with its National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. Big mouthful. That's the gist of my comments. Mr. Regus, did you want to comment on that? Are you still here?
I'm still here, sure. No, I just want to say thank you to current city council, previous city council, Mayor Rob, Mayor Ken, Landy, Dave, everybody else that's been involved in really improving this wastewater treatment plant the last five, six, seven years. We've come a long ways, there's still a long ways to go, but it's in such better shape, and so we should be really proud of of our efforts. That's so thank you to staff, thank you to our elected officials.
Thank you, Mr. Regus. Mr. Garcia, did I see you trying to get my attention?
Yeah, Your Honor, sorry. We all wanted to say to thank and welcome our two new staff members.
Yes.
And if I was supposed to say that at the beginning, and I regret regret it. But from all the council, the mayor, the staff, welcome Dana, welcome Rebecca to North Bend. We appreciate you joining our team.
Thank you very much for remembering that comment, very important one. Great. And now I'm going to move back to my notes. And and yes, if I may, we will move into executive discussion as previously announced to discuss potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty two dot thirty dot one one oh one I and to discuss performance of a public employee pursuant to R C W forty two dot thirty dot one ten one G. Session is expected to last approximately fifty minutes. There is expected to be no action following the session. Thank you, Ms. Mascow, if you could help the public and non-executive staff into the lobby.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We are back in session. Thank you for waiting for us. I will at this time entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
First adjourned.
Second.
I had a motion by Mr. Garcia. I think Mr. Elwood was the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Thank you all for this evening, and we will see you the next time online. Good night.
Night.